For planning board meeting of July 13, 2020. And pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And we will have a roll call. Mario Luciallo.
Here.
John Ferreira.
Here.
Gloria Pacico.
Here.
Cynthia Savigny, I'm here. Elizabeth Andrade is absent at this meeting. We also have in attendance William Kenny, the Director of Planning, and Patty Aguirre, the Recording Clerk. And we have one more person. We have Alex Mello from Fall River Government TV. Okay, and so now, item one. Form C, definitive subdivision file number 2021. I'm going to have to change glasses, or else I'm not going to be able to read this.
Ooh, don't drop those, we'll be out of business.
I know. There we go. And the locations Highland Farms 2, Highland Avenue, Hayfield Lane, and Courtney Street. And the assessors map, U-4 Lot 1 and U-5 Lot 1. And it's requests submitted by SciTech on behalf of the owner applicant, St. Vincent Services Incorporated, for a proposed 38 single-family house lot subdivision with a minimum of 12,000 square foot of area and 100 feet of street frontage per lot, with requested waivers for the proposed roadway systems. Plan entitled definitive subdivision. Plan of land Highland Farms 2, map U-4 Lot 1, U-5 Lot 1, Hayfield Lane and Courtney Street dated March 7, 2020, single-family district. This item has been tabled from the June 15, 2020 meeting, and we have Mr. Aguirre.
Great. Good evening. For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a Senior Project Manager at SciTech Engineering with addresses here in the city, Dartmouth, and Marshfield. As the Chairlady stated, she basically gave my whole presentation, this parcel of land, you all know it as the rear portion of the property that St. Vincent Services owns off of Highland Avenue. On the plan that I have colored up for you here, this would be, as you're heading north on Highland Avenue, this would be the main building of St. Vincent Services where all the offices are, and the gymnasium. These would be all the residential homes that service the children, that are taken care of there. Approximately, I don't know, four years ago, we permitted the subdivision to the north, which was Highland Farms Phase 1, which I'm sure you've all driven through. It's a beautiful subdivision, beautiful homes, sidewalks, street lamps, the whole nine yards. And they're just finishing that up now. This would be a second phase to that subdivision, and basically look identical to it. The roadway systems that we've proposed for width, construction, sidewalks, lights, street trees, everything is to be identical to that first phase of the subdivision. And you'll see that in the package that we've submitted, the waiver list is minimal, and they're identical to the waivers that were granted for Phase 1. A little bit more complicated in this subdivision is the fact that, okay, we're coming off of existing Hayfield Lane, and I hope everybody can still hear me, existing Hayfield Lane, we would be continuing southerly through the site and connecting back to Courtney Street at the southerly terminus of our new subdivision road. There would be a couple of little cul-de-sacs that come off of the main roadway system for this side of the subdivision, and then further heading westerly on Courtney, there would be another dead-end cul-de-sac subdivision part of this as well. Initially, when we had presented this subdivision, we had filed for an A&R plan, which I think you may have seen, taking all of the lots on Courtney Street, eight lots, and formaying them under a Form A application. After discussions with the planner, Community Utilities, we've been asked to make things a little bit simpler and more, I don't want to say concise, but so that we can handle everything at once, we've now put those Form A lots into the Form C application. So you'll be getting some revised plans that indicate those lots are not afforded a Form A signature, and they'll be part of the Form C application, really just a technicality. So when we come through the subdivision, what we're proposing is a 24-foot wide roadway system, which is what was approved for Phase 1, but two minimums sperm on either side, sidewalk on one side of the roadway system. What you see on the plan here shaded in yellow is a bordering vegetated wetland, which has previously been approved through the Conservation Commission permitting process for an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation. So that wetlands line in the yellow shaded area that you see, that line is locked in place. That's the first thing we do when we start a development, is see, okay, what is the usable land, what is the nonusable land? So that yellow area is all a wetland, which falls under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission and the Wetlands Protection Act with DEP. Additionally, through, on this site, flowing from here through our site and all the way back out to Highland Avenue is Steep Brook. So again, that has its own set of regulations, again, through the Conservation Commission and with DEP, with regards to what can we do within certain distances to that. Currently, where you see that gray road crossing over that Steep Brook area, there is currently a driveway that already crosses that area, and there's a 36-inch diameter concrete culvert that conveys the water from one side to the other. So Steep Brook flows through this 36-inch culvert. We'll be replacing that with a much larger, what's called an open bottom box culvert, like a little bridge is basically what it is. And that will allow us to expand the width of the roadway system and bring it all the way back out to Courtney Street. What you see shaded in blue are a number of detention ponds, very similar to Phase 1, and actually, this might, this might help. So the idea here was, I created a plan that shows Phase 1, this would be the dividing line. So this was Phase 1, that created 42 lots, and I think there's two lots available. And so this would be an extension of that subdivision. I think this gives you a good idea of how everything meets together and how everything We have received some initial review from Community Utilities, the City Engineer, the City Planner. We have met, on like a brainstorming session to go through some of those comments, a lot of them are technical issues that we're in the process of revising and getting it back to those departments for additional review. What we had wanted to do was get before you, give you an initial presentation of the subdivision, discuss the proposed waivers, and give the abutters and the neighbors the ability to come in and voice their concerns, so that we can take that all back to the office, make whatever changes we need to, to make sure we can make as many people as happy as possible. So, in a nutshell, that's the proposal for the new subdivision, which will create a total of 46 lots, now including those A&R lots along the street. Every lot would be conforming to zoning, 12,000 square feet with 100 feet of upland. Every home would be built to the required building setbacks, identical to Phase 1. What we've tried to do, and through the drainage design, is to keep the amounts of cuts and fills of the roadway system to a minimum, so we collect a bunch of water. Rather than having everything going down to one set of catch basins and piping it to one gigantic pond, we try and capture water in a few hundred-foot intervals of roadway and put it into its own pond. That's why we put in a series of ponds throughout the development, and that keeps us from having to have large fills or large cuts with additional drainage in the roadway system. Sewer water has been reviewed, they have some comments, like I said, that we need to work through, but conceptually, this is what has been proposed. If you have any specific questions regarding it generally at this point probably, I'd be more than glad to answer any of those questions, or any questions that any neighbor or any of your abutters may have.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Uh, Courtney Street.
Yes.
What actually will come to a play in this?
Well, we've most recently had, I wasn't there because I wasn't working Friday, we've had discussions with the improvements that need to be made to Courtney Street, and there will be some substantial improvements made. We're working on that now with engineering, with the planner, and with Community Utilities, of what improvements need to be made. It will be resurfaced 100 percent. Water's already been looped through, we will be extending some sewer up through that site, up through the road as well. So there'll be a bunch of work being done in Courtney, and we're on par with trying to get that stuff resolved before the next meeting, and having the city's voice of everything they want done, and all the abutters want done in that street, before we come back to you. So until we get a clean bill or a clean list of what the city wants, I don't want to present too much, because I know there have been discussions back and forth about what width do we go to, do we go to the 24 that the subdivision is. The concept of a chain is only as strong as its weakest link, is that, you know, if the subdivision road's 24, there's no sense in that road, Courtney Street, being anything more than 24. So Courtney Street is going to have its own set of construction drawings, probably its own set of construction waivers, like the sub, because the road will have to be brought up to your standards without, with ever waivers that are requested and potentially granted. So there will be some dramatic changes to Courtney Street.
Okay. That is Courtney. Can you explain to us a little bit about Seabrook?
Seabrook?
Is that the street, that paved street?
Brookside.
Brookside, okay, straight.
There is, and I don't know, but better to see it. Right now, again, so this would be the westerly boundary of the parcel that we're working with, this is St. Vincent's front parcel. There is a private way, Brookside Drive here, and then that goes through St. Vincent's property, and it may or something like that. Nothing's being done to Brookside. No, we're not going out through that way, that, Brookside will stay exactly the way that it is.
All right, so Brookside don't have anything along with?
Nothing to do with, nothing to do with this development. Brookside will stay exactly the way that they see it now, and I think they just paved it maybe within a year or two. It used to be just a gravel roadway, but Brookside will stay exactly the way that it is right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Dan?
Mr. Aguirre, that first takeoff, the first little cul-de-sac coming off, yeah, how many house lots are on that one?
Including, including these two Form As, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30.
12. And how many of the big loop that we're tying in on both ends here?
How many of these Form As, 1, 28, 29, 30?
30. And so now, the only way that they'd be accessing, well, obviously, on the smaller cul-de-sac roadway, that's only one way in, one way out.
Correct.
The other one, you're proposing to come in, because I've driven that cul-de-sac up top.
Yeah, so what, what happens is, how does a dead-end requirement that the city has regarding safety and fire apparatus, so technically, there will be the terminus here at Courtney, and then also another terminus here, out at Highland Avenue as well. So theoretically, you could do this, and make that loop entirely around. So that helps, not only with pedestrian access, that helps us with water circulation, because now we have a looped water line, provides better water service. The sewer line will be split, a good portion of the sewer line will go through the force main that we've already installed, but anything that we can install gravity-wise and come out into Courtney Street will be doing that as well.
And how, how wide did you say that crossover was on that, on that street that's coming through at the end of that top cul-de-sac there?
The crossover here, through the wetland?
Uh, there's one up above, isn't there somewhere, yeah.
That is, what do you mean, how wide?
Well, is that, is that a stream going through there?
No, no, the stream is here.
It's down there?
Yeah.
Okay, because that was up on top.
Yeah, no, the stream is here. This is wetland off to this area, wetland off to that area. This is, this is the Brookside one.
And how wide are you proposing to put that box?
This box culvert?
Yep.
Right now, it's three-foot diameter circle. We'll be going to 10 feet wide, open, rectangle, three feet high. So we'll, we'll basically be arching over the stream, which is the new stream standards. We need to get beyond the banks of the stream. And that will create a natural bottom, not a circular concrete bottom, and that's to meet the requirements of the, these stream standards for crossings.
And that, that'll suffice a 100-year storm or anything like that?
It exceeds, it exceeds the 100-year storm, and actually, Paul Ferland did ask for an additional calculation and study for that crossing, which we'll be providing and getting it back to him. All the stormwater systems for the subdivision, although we're only required to design for the 25-year storm, they do ask what happens in the 100-year storm. We've designed all of the ponds and the overall drainage for the subdivision to accommodate the 100-year storm, so there would, there's a drastic decrease to make sure that no downstream abutters are being flooded out. Through Phase 1, we had a number of concerns from different neighbors about flooding in that area, in the field, in the wetland system, and we assured them through the design process that they would not see any flooding at all. Now, that was built probably three years ago, and Bill and I talked about it not that long ago, because we both remember the meetings, when you go up there now, you don't see water basically in any of those ponds, or if you do, it's only up to the outlet portion of the pond. There's been no flooding along Highland Avenue like everybody thought was going to happen. So it's, it's worked out well. So the drainage design for both are a little bit extreme.
So what's the topo look like between the wetlands and the, where you build them? What's the elevation difference?
With the houses or with the road?
Oh, with the houses.
With the houses, like if you look at Phase 1, a number of those homes are walkouts. We, we expect that to be the same condition here, that the majority of the homes will be walkout basements. So this road does get filled, so then by the time you get the road filled and then get the house filled, it sets up perfectly for a walkout basement, which basically gives people an additional floor of living space, almost free. Each, each of these homes individually, now again, you're not permitting home construction. Permitting of the home construction will be through site plan review, and each one will require to have its own notice of intent and order of conditions through the Conservation Commission for the lots that are within 100 feet to the wetland. So this board is only permitting the road, the drainage system, and the utilities, not home construction.
No more questions? You're all set, very good.
We do have some public comments that have been submitted, and I can read those into the record if you like, and then we have also some people, I think, in the anteroom that would like to come and make their comments known. So, do you want me to go ahead and read those letters into the record?
I'd be glad to, just to make sure that they're the same ones. Patty, please, check this.
Yeah, Bill's going to read them.
You're going to read them?
I'll flip you for it.
If they're not signed, they're not, they're not to be read.
Right. And we take a, an email that's electronically signed is good enough, right? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
So let's see, do you want me to start? Do you have in front of you a June 10 from a, I'm sorry, June 10 from Derek Souza? Would this be the first one? Oh, start on the second page and work our way up to the front. How about, yeah, June 10 from Derek Souza, and I think the signature is adequate on that, clearly from his email. Do you want me to go ahead and read that one into the record?
I don't seem to have that one, Patty.
Can you show her?
I didn't hear any of you guys all have those at the, for the last meeting. I got all of the packages.
You want me to go ahead with this?
Do you have that one?
No, I didn't give them to you tonight, you already had them.
I mean, I didn't, it's my fault, I apologize, but I'd love to hear Mr. Kenny, if you don't mind, refresh my memory.
I believe it was four that was given to us. One was repetitive, one was a follow-up.
I, I have one from Matthew DeFaria. I have, this one's not signed on my copy.
Okay, I have a Matthew DeFaria.
Okay.
And that's.
I have an Eric Silva. And the other two that I have are not signed on my copy.
Right.
On my copy.
Okay, I'm going to rely on you to tell me which ones you, you think are in proper form to read into, into the record, and then either you can read them or I can read them, it's up to you. Or, or I suppose if the, if the actual individuals are here, we could have them come in.
Well, that's true. However, I don't know who to call up here. Let me, I have one that's starting. I'm emailing in regards to the subdivision consisting of 38 single-family homes.
Right.
Do you have that at the beginning?
Yeah, yeah, we've got that from Derek Souza.
I do not have that signed.
Do we want to see if Eric Souza's here?
If she's here?
I think they may be, I think they may be.
Someone's coming in right now.
Derek wants to work, but he wants it butter red.
Okay.
I didn't hear her.
He has to work, but he wants it red, so Bill can read it.
Say that again. I didn't hear you.
He is not here, he had to work, but he would like his letter red.
It's not signed.
It is on our copy. We just wiped it out with a board because he didn't want everybody, but now that we're live anyway, it's out, so, but we do have.
Is that, is that Mrs. Souza?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm just saying.
Your call, Madam Chair.
I'd like a copy of the signed one. And yes, if it is now signed.
Now, when you, when you say signed, I mean, if you sent an email and it's from Derek Souza, it's.
Right, but you remember, it was wiped it out.
No, but this was totally wiped it out. When I read the whole thing, I could not tell who sent this in.
How about this one here?
And two do have the name, but this particular one does not have the name. Thanks, Patty.
We just wiped it out, because at the beginning, he didn't want his name out there, so we wiped it out all the names, but the names in emails are right there, so it's.
I'd like a copy of that, not tonight, but yes, fine.
This one's a go, okay.
But as I said, in, in the future, I don't think that these should even be distributed if they're not signed.
Well, let me, let me go ahead with this. The first I have is Wednesday, June 10 at 9:38 a.m., from Derek Souza, and he says, "I am emailing in regards to the subdivision consisting of 38 single-family homes for Highland Farms 2. I am a resident of Highland Farms 1 and live on Hayfield Lane. I am opposed to a roadway system being built through Hayfield Lane as an access road into the new subdivision for Highland Farms 2. I live at the end of the dead-end cul-de-sac on Hayfield Lane, which the access road will be built through. There is no traffic on this cul-de-sac. There is children who play and run around on this dead cul-de-sac because of how safe it is, since there is no car traffic in it. Building an access road through this cul-de-sac will increase traffic tremendously. 38 homes figure two-plus cars for each home. That's roughly a potential of at least 76 cars of traffic now driving through the once-dead-end cul-de-sac of Hayfield, of Hayfield Inn. This will create a tremendous safety issue for the children who are playing in that dead-end cul-de-sac. This access road will create a very busy street, which I did not sign up for when I decided to build my home on this dead-end cul-de-sac, thinking I will have a lot of privacy for the duration of my stay at my home. And not to mention the running brook of water, which is running on the backside of the woods, which this new access road will have to go over, which means some type of bridge system needs to be built for the road to go over this brook. There must be some type of environmental preservation law, which should prohibit such a road to be built over it. So to sum up what I'm saying, I do not want there to be an access road to Highland Farms 2 to be built through my dead-end cul-de-sac of Hayfield Lane. It is a safety issue with all the new traffic driving through, and an environmental issue for the running brook the road will have to be built over. I want the access road to go through Courtney Street. You can also access Courtney Street via Herman Street to High Crest Road, to Lucille Lane, to Theodore Street. So in essence, you have multiple points of access to Highland Farms 2. I hope you take my arguments into consideration and rule in favor of my proposal." That was June 10, 9:38 a.m., from Derek Souza, and there's a PS to that, same day at 11:58 a.m. I also forgot to mention the lot site premium I had to pay for my house, because the lot I chose, Lot 14, was on a dead-end cul-de-sac with tons of privacy, I had to pay a site premium of $10,000 on top of the sale price of the house. So how can someone charge me $10,000 extra because of the exclusivity of the lot, and then go and build an access road through the dead-end cul-de-sac to lead to another development? At that point, my lot is no longer a premium site, because the location of the lot is no longer private. This is completely wrong, and they should not be allowed to build this access road. If that access road is built, then what about the $10,000 I paid for the privacy of the lot? I also want to note, the houses across the street from me on Hayfield Lane have a higher site premium. I believe that premium is 15,000. I also want to mention that only the residents of Hayfield Lane received letters about this new development. Why didn't the residents on Highland Farm Road receive these letters as well? All this traffic will be running through their street as well. Those residents should have the opportunity to have their say in the matter as well. And also, at the moment, there are only four occupied houses on Hayfield Lane, the other houses are still under construction, so the voices of opinion on this matter is highly restricted, and that is not right. I want to add this to my original opposition statement. And so that's the, the end of Derek, Derek Souza's comments. I don't think we have any further in here, do we Patty? No, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Aguirre, can you point out where Hayfield Lane is?
Yeah.
And how we're, how we're affecting the cul-de-sac, please?
So, this is the existing cul-de-sac in Hayfield Lane. Right now, the main traffic flows up Highland Farms Road, you can either take a right to go to that cul-de-sac, or you can take a left and head north to that cul-de-sac. This is lot number 14, not on the cul-de-sac. So Mr., is it Souza? Mr. Souza is at lot 14, not on the cul-de-sac. Lot 15, lot 16 are on the cul-de-sac. And on the original subdivision plans, the purpose of this cul-de-sac being brought this close to this property line, and the strip of land preserved, lot 15 ends here, lot, sorry, 15 ends here, lot 16 ends here, with a 40-foot projection going from this cul-de-sac into this parcel of land. It's my understanding that it was presented to all of these buyers that there was a proposed roadway for a Phase 2 going into this subdivision. I can't say who's telling the truth and who's not, but I am told at closing and prior to that, everyone was made well aware that this road was proposed to go through at some point in time as a Phase 2. So, I guess we can deal with them one at a time, but for Mr. Souza, the, the traffic that, that is generated through this subdivision, through this cul-de-sac, this is not a playground. It's a street, and it's a cul-de-sac. And what we've done is we've proposed to leave it as it is, so that people have the ability to turn around here and use the roadway system as they do now, and that this isn't just a connect road through. So theoretically, you could turn around here and go this way, you could turn around here. So we wanted to leave the ability to turn around and still give these people the cul-de-sac that they purchased into at the end of this subdivision road intact. And we've had that discussion with, with Bill and with Community Utilities, where they want us to get rid of the cul-de-sac, and we thought that that would be inappropriate, because these buyers did buy, buy this plan. This lot on this cul-de-sac with this roadway extension 40 feet wide coming off of that cul-de-sac to the second phase of the subdivision.
But now theoretically, someone could go through Courtney all the way through Hayfield.
All the way to Highland Avenue, that's correct. And the subdivision control law and the, and the city of Fall River's subdivision regulations, they promote this to happen, so we don't have 40 subdivisions that you can't get from point A to point B. So they want these strips, they want these interconnections, that's in the regulations. That's just good planning, that's in anybody's planning board rules and regulations. Again, I don't know what transpired between purchase and sales agreements and closings and all of those things, I can just tell you what meets the requirements that are in your regulations.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. The next one I have is email from Rachel Silva, June 10, 10:46 p.m., electronically signed by Eric Silva and Rachel Silva. I wonder if they're in the audience, Patty? Can we see if maybe they want to come in and present their own case? No, okay, then I'll go ahead and read this. It's, "We, Mr. and Mrs. Eric and Rachel Silva of 215 Highland Farm Road, Fall River, Mass. 0272O, are writing to voice our opinions on matter number two of the June 15, 2020 Fall River Planning Board meeting regarding subdivision Highland Farms 2. We live on the corner of Highland Farm Road and Hayfield Lane and are not in support of this proposed plan to connect Highland Farms to Highland Farms 2 via Hayfield Lane. When we purchased our home, we were told by members of the builders team that if they ever did open another subdivision, it would not connect in any way to the Highland Woods (Steen) Development that is located on Courtney Street. According to the proposed plans, Highland Farms 2 would lead directly to Highland Woods via Courtney Street, and we are not in favor of being connected to Courtney Street via Hayfield Lane. If the proposed subdivision is approved, we would be in favor of a street redesign that did not connect via Hayfield Lane. We have two small children and chose this development, Highland Farms, to be a small neighborhood that ended in a cul-de-sac road that did not connect to two other large developments. We thank you for your time and consideration. Signed, Eric Silva and Rachel Silva."
Want me to give a quick response? Majority of the responses the same, were just for orientation purposes, Mr. Silva would be the next lot north at this intersection, would be Lot 13. But first we had Lot 14, now we have Lot 13.
They can't hear you being in the room.
I can't be in both places at the same time, so Lot 13, which would be Mr. Silva's, would be the next lot north to Mr. Souza's, who we previously discussed. So there, he's at the intersection of Highland Farms Road and Hayfield Lane as well.
This is an email from Tiffany in Onoria Lopes. Is Tiffany here? Yeah, she should read her own statement.
Not big on public speaking. I was happy to be emailing, but...
You can take your mask off.
Yep.
I can take this off.
Thank you.
If I read my email, do I still have time to talk?
Yeah.
Okay. "The proposal for this subdivision includes a street being put through the cul-de-sac our family just built their house on, and we are opposed due to the safety issues it will create, as are our neighbors. We purchased this specific lot to be on a dead-end cul-de-sac and have safety knowing that's where our son could play without street traffic. We paid a premium of $10,000 to be on this specific lot for those reasons. There was no mention, there is no mention in any of our paperwork that this would be altered. All prints show this house on a dead-end cul-de-sac. Changing that drastically changes our lives. We chose this lot back in 2019 when we went under contract because it was on a cul-de-sac and I was expecting my first baby. He's now 14 months old, and the whole purpose of building a house on a cul-de-sac was to ensure he would have a safe place to grow up in. We're now being told there's a street going directly through the cul-de-sac and that the safety and assurance will now be gone. Unfortunately, not all the residents in the subdivision have been notified or given the opportunity to share their thoughts and feelings. They also bring their children here to ride their bikes and play. That safety and assurance of having a house in a dead-end street will now be replaced with a high volume of traffic and construction vehicles in and out for years to come. We've been dealing with the frequent traffic, dust and dirt of construction with the idea of an end in sight. There's no end in sight for us to have peace and enjoy our first home, which we have saved almost two decades for. We should at least be able to have the safety of the cul-de-sac we built our house on. There are other points of access for the road to go through Courtney Street or High Crest Road via Herman Street, High Crest as well as Lucille Lane onto Theodore Street. So in essence, there are multiple points to access to Highland Farms 2 without disrupting our lives." So, I'm all for growth and development, but not at the expense of the residents of Fall River. Prior to building this house, we spent a year building a house with Ian Steen from Steen Realty in the other Highland Woods development, only to have that house contract canceled two weeks before I gave birth to my son, so he could put it on the market and sell it to someone else. Then we had to start all over again. So, two weeks prior to giving birth, I lost my home that I spent a year building. Soon as I had, I think even before I had him, we went over to, back to Bristol Pacific, signed a purchase and sales agreement on this house on Hayfield Lane, Lot 15, I believe. There were plenty of lots available. We picked this one because it was on a dead-end cul-de-sac. They are now putting, they've already started clearing trees and putting the street through, which I find reprehensible considering this meeting hasn't even happened yet. So, I don't know if anyone on the board is in business with them. I don't know if there's a conflict of interest that anyone wants to talk about. I'm assuming there isn't because no one's announced one. I don't know how they've already begun doing something that hasn't been approved yet. I also don't understand how, at the purchase and sales signing, I specifically asked Linda Thomas of Bristol Pacific. She said they might continue to build a subdivision and build more houses in the future. I said, "Is that going to interrupt the cul-de-sac? Is there any chance of that getting rid of the cul-de-sac, going through the cul-de-sac?" And I was told, "No. It is going smack dab through the middle of the cul-de-sac, and it's going to be a high-traffic street." That, to me, is not okay. And I'm all, like I said, I'm all for building and development, but not when builders, one of them being from out of town, one of them from being in town, take advantage of the residents of Fall River. And we're not the only one that it's happened to. This is not the only bump in the road that we've had with the building of our home either, but I'll spare you all that details. There's also a giant retention pond in our yard, which we knew was going to happen, and yes, the houses have walkouts. Ours goes to nowhere. Our walkout goes to a giant retention pond with a very small sliver of land to walk into our backyard. So we actually have to go to the front of our yard to get into our backyard, if that makes any sense. Can I point at the proposed... Is there one with a large picture of the cul-de-sac? Yeah, right here. So, Hayfield is here, right? So, our home is directly on the cul-de-sac. I'm thinking Lot 15 is here. Yep, so this is us.
So, see this line?
Yep.
And there's one here. That's, no one, the applicant owns this strip. You own to here, this lot owns to here.
Right, we have an easement on our property where they're cutting down the trees right now.
No, you don't have, the only easement on your property is this drainage. This 40-foot strip, you do not own. So they should not be cutting on your property.
We were told we have an easement here where the fire hydrant is, and they've already started cutting the trees down.
No.
So they have, they have a road cleared here that they've been using for construction to build the bridge or whatever they're doing down there. And now, the proposed road is over here.
Correct.
If they used the road that they already had, maybe it wouldn't be so bad, but it's still going to be bad. There's still going to be high traffic, there's still going to be 100 more cars in and out of our front yard. If they clear that, that's not a cul-de-sac. The definition of a cul-de-sac is a dead end, right? That is not a cul-de-sac anymore. That's now a street. So we bought a house, built a house on a cul-de-sac, spent 400, you know, lived in a one-bedroom apartment to spend $450,000 on a house in a cul-de-sac that's now going to be a house on a street. That's not okay with me.
So I just want to say, the moral of the story is, like you said, Onoria Lopes, so, imagine you live in a cul-de-sac and now they put a street on it. It's very wrong. Plus, they told us on the right side of us, it's all wetlands. Lot 12, it's going to be right on the side of us now, of the new development. That's another wrong thing that they're doing. I don't know if you can see Lot 12?
Right, we were told there wouldn't be houses built.
It's all wetlands, they told us. And all of a sudden, there's a lot right on the side of us.
Here is their lot and cul-de-sac. What they're talking about here is Lot 12. This is the wetland that's in the back of their lot now. So their house is in this green area. They have a detention pond directly behind them. This yellow shaded area is the wetland on the back of their lot, and on the back of Lot 12 is one.
But there's a lot right on the side of us now. Yeah, they were told, nobody can build on the side of us.
Chairwoman, I don't know what was presented to them.
Yeah.
I really don't know if conversations took place. Again, I can just present to you what the rules and regulations are, that that roadway was preserved specifically for this reason. Now, if Bristol Pacific or whoever didn't have an agreement to purchase the remaining, this new subdivision, St. Vincent Services still owns this, so if they didn't have the rights to purchase this new piece, they would have reserved the rights for that strip. And then maybe at that point, no road would ever go through. So, again, I don't know what was presented either by sales or by whoever. I'm being told by the owners of Bristol Pacific that it was made clear to everyone that the road was going to go through. So I can't tell you if Bristol Pacific's telling the truth or if these homeowners are telling you the truth. All I can tell you is that the land was preserved for that reason, 40-foot right of way, so that the roadway could go through. If there's something legally that the landowners can go back on and have some type of proof or some type of dealings with Bristol Pacific of, you know, in writing or anything else that you told me or it was presented to me, that's beyond the scope of the planning board of the City of Fall River.
Right, but the three neighbors, so our family, Lopes' family, Derek Souza, and Silva family, one right after the other, are all saying the same thing, that we were not told that there was a street going through the cul-de-sac. These plans were not given to us or provided to us or shown to us at the time of purchase and sales or closing. This was not explained to us at closing. No one at closing said, "We're going to put a street through a cul-de-sac."
If that was the case, we never would have put the house there. 450 grand, we don't have it, you know what I mean? Can't just sell the house and go somewhere else.
What I can offer to the board is that these plans weren't prepared prior to their closing. This is a recent application and preparation of these plans.
So when was the land acquired by Bristol Pacific?
It's not acquired. It's still not acquired.
So when were the plans proposed?
Within a couple of weeks of when we submitted, which was April sometime.
April.
We saw this for the first time. Yeah, it was like the month after the COVID stuff stopped.
It's very simple. If you look on the plans of Highland Farms Phase 1, it shows a cul-de-sac. It's that simple. And now, they're trying to make more money. It's okay. Make all your money, but you're destroying that cul-de-sac. It's that simple.
Now, what did they tell you between your lot, obviously, and the one on the other side of the cul-de-sac? That land in between, what did they say that was?
Could I interrupt a minute? I want to know who "they" is. This innuendo stuff, and we don't know who said what. I want to know who said what, because you may have some ability to bring a lawsuit against somebody who misrepresented to you. It certainly wasn't the planning board. I know it wasn't Dan Aguirre. We need to know, who told you there's never going to be a cul-de-sac?
Linda Thomas of Bristol Pacific.
Was this somebody that you could rely on reasonably? I mean, who was it? Name names. We need to know.
Oh, I did. Linda Thomas of Bristol Pacific.
Okay, you should be talking to her. You should be filing a lawsuit against her. I mean, that's nothing that the board can do if somebody else lied to you who's not an authorized agent of the board.
Well, that's not why we're here today. We're here today to tell you why we're opposing it.
I think, I understand that. Could I just ask Mr. Aguirre a couple of questions? Maybe he'll answer some of the questions you had. They talked about construction vehicles and construction and the issue that during the construction of the new subdivision, there's going to be construction traffic in front of their home on the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
What do you know about that? What can you tell us about how is the construction procedure going to happen? Are they going to use mainly Courtney Street? Are they going to use other streets?
Well, and we did this similarly on Driftwood. Now, let's go back to 2016, when we were doing Phase 1. No one on Driftwood Street, no one on Highland Avenue. No one wants land developed until they got their house, and then that's the last house. Nobody else gets one after that. But it's okay to use land and to go drive down people's streets and increase traffic on their streets when it's to provide you a home. I mean, this is, I've been doing this since 1994, and it's the same old thing. I wouldn't want anything built in my backyard either. But that doesn't mean that the landowner isn't afforded the rights under the law to develop their land. So we've got to keep the scope, you know, looking at one location. Back to Mr. Kenny's concerns with regards to construction activity, what's taken place on that parcel of land now at the end of that cul-de-sac, which you're familiar with, are construction activities in relation to Phase 1 of the subdivision. They've moved dirt around. As houses get built, you have less room to stockpile materials, pipe, machines. So everything is now, because they're getting shrunk on their development, and they have few lots to put stuff on, they've now put everything onto that next piece. They have an agreement with St. Vincent Services to use that land for construction.
Yeah.
All the homes along Hayfield were pretty much done before Lot 15 was built. So all the people along Hayfield Lane, the first whatever 20 homes, they had to live through the construction process of Lot 15. And that's the nature of buying into a new subdivision. It's a construction site until it's complete. Now, what we did on Driftwood is, we made it a condition to make every attempt to utilize the new subdivision road, not bring machines through on Driftwood Street, just come in straight off of Highland Avenue. We could most likely do something that either no heavy machinery, or, I mean, there are things that the board can condition on during construction. Now, we're getting way ahead of ourselves because we're nowhere near.
Right, but you could foresee the possibility that if this were approved, that one of the conditions of going forward would be to somehow limit where the construction vehicles would access.
I think there's some type of a condition that we could do that would limit the amount of activity taking place. Granted, some activity has to take place.
Right.
However, what they could do is, you could almost condition them that they need to build, you know, the first however many hundred feet of the new roadway system complete immediately. So that way, at least 300, 200 or 300 feet off of the cul-de-sac is a complete road. So they're not dealing with a dusty gravel road for the time that it takes to construct this whole subdivision.
Okay.
So it can probably be done in phases, but again, I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, but it's definitely something that we can look at.
Well, we're getting ahead, but I want to try and answer some of their concerns here. I think the other concern about traffic is after the work is all done, when the construction's over, have we had any sense of a traffic study or anything that addresses where are these new people going to go? Are they going to go out to Highland Avenue by going north and over, or are they going to come down Courtney Street?
In your, and it's required in your submission package and in your document that you have, part of the environmental impact report has a section with regards to traffic, trip ends, new trips, and again, depending upon where you are in this subdivision, would determine upon, determine which route that you took. So you would think, if you're heading north to the highway, you would probably head north through Hayfield and then down Highland. If you're heading into the city, you would come south to Courtney and out out to Highland Avenue. So it's probably, I would guess, maybe a 50/50 or less which way the traffics would split. Again, we're not talking about, everyone thought Phase 1 was going to be these insurmountable traffic numbers, and there's going to be all kinds of traffic and accidents over on Highland Avenue. It's a small subdivision. We deal with subdivisions with hundreds of lots, and one subdivision on top of the other. This is not a lot of homes for an area of this size, lots of this size. These are 12,000 square foot lots, and the traffic is minimal. Traffic increase would be minimal.
You think it's fair to say that the folks that are living, what is the street in the lower left of the plan?
This would be Courtney. This, you would think, everyone would go to.
That's what I'm thinking, maybe...
And then I would say probably, again, depending upon where you're going, would probably split.
Yeah, you can't predict for sure. The lower left would most likely go down Courtney to Highland.
Especially with the improvements that we'll be needing to make to Courtney Street, that might be a more attractive route to go to get to Highland Avenue.
Then you don't need a road on Hayfield Lane. They can use Courtney Street.
The requirements are that we can't have dead ends, that they have to connect. There is a dead-end limit, so we have to connect roads.
Whose requirement is it that there has...
The City of Fall River.
Okay, but does the dead end have to be on Hayfield Lane? There's another cul-de-sac in the development that could abut. There's Courtney Street, there's High Crest Road.
There's no other subdivision, there's no other lot in this road in the subdivision that would pass. So here's Hayfield Lane. This is old pasture, ends here. This is the lot line. This is Steen Road, ends here. Again, from day one of this subdivision, this cul-de-sac was placed at the terminus of this property line with this 40-foot strip preserved. with this 40-foot strip preserved for the reason of extending Hayfield.
There's another cul-de-sac in Phase 1 that's right next to this?
Right here. Old Pasture. Here's Highland Avenue. You come in, you take a right into Steep Brook. Then you continue down, you take a right into Old Pasture. They're just finishing this house now. So you can actually see this cul-de-sac in your backyard. That's this one.
Right, so why can't the street come off Old Pasture?
Old Pasture ends here. This is the lot line for 10. This is the lot line for 11. We can't do this and cut through all of this wetland. Again, because of this wetland configuration.
They could build a bridge like they're planning to do on the other side.
And only off of so many square feet of wetland. This cul-de-sac was designed for Phase 1 for the sole purpose of continuing into Phase 2. The sewer system in Phase 1 was designed to be big enough to accommodate these homes, to continue this sewer going up through the sewer system avenue.
It sounds like something that's been planned for a long time.
It was, absolutely.
It would've been great to know.
However, Bristol Pacific did not have this land under agreement at that initial time. As developers and as an engineer, you make determinations of, okay, if we do have the ability to connect to a Phase 2, where would that be? And that was the logical location to put that.
So has the bridge been built off to the right?
No, the bridge is gonna be here.
So if there's an opportunity to build a bridge from the other cul-de-sac to get to the development, why wouldn't that be considered?
No, that won't happen for one, because these homes are already done. There's no 40-foot strip reserved at the end of this cul-de-sac to get here. The 40-foot strip was reserved here, in between 15 and 16.
Like you said, it's a small subdivision in comparison to others. It should be more than adequate for the other two streets to supply egress and entrance for the small subdivision. I don't necessarily understand why it has to be through the cul-de-sac we built our house on.
You do see our point, right?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay. I just want you.
And again, as I presented, I don't know what was presented to who. And that's not my job. And that's not my job.
No, that doesn't matter at this point here in this place. But if there's an other, if there are two other entrances where you can access the small subdivision, why do we need a third?
There is no other logical location to connect to that subdivision.
Courtney Street and High Crest Road.
We are going to Courtney Street here.
Right. So there's one.
Yep.
High Crest is two. It's still gonna connect.
No, it doesn't. Because that's, then this would be measured a dead end from here to there. And we can't have that dead end a certain length.
So High Crest to Lucille Lane and Theodore Street is not gonna connect to this new subdivision?
It is.
Right, so that's an entrance.
We can't have a dead end that long. So if we come off of Courtney Street here and put a cul-de-sac here, this dead end is too long.
That's Courtney Street, but where's Herman Street, High Crest Road?
All over here. There's no way near this. This is all wet. See this green? This green is hump line. That's.
Courtney Street is on one side. High Crest and Herman is on the other side.
Over here.
They both, right, but they both go to this new subdivision.
Here is Theodore.
Right.
So how do I get from that cul-de-sac to Herman Street that's over here?
Courtney Street or Theodore, Lucille Lane and High Crest.
How do I physically get from that cul-de-sac to the streets that you're speaking of that are over here? I don't understand what you're asking, how you think that can happen.
I don't know. She's not an engineer.
I understand. So I can't give her the answer that she's looking for.
But the whole point of this was you guys are destroying a cul-de-sac. That's the whole point. We're going too far ahead right now. We're not engineers. You're the engineer.
I would really like, I'd like to answer your question. Courtney Street goes to the same place that you're speaking of, this new subdivision. Courtney Street goes there, right.
Here's the cul-de-sac.
High Crest and Lucille Lane and Theodore also go to the same place. They go to Courtney Street. So that's the answer.
This is the subdivision. Let me put a mask on for you. Is it okay if I show our plan?
Yes, it is.
So right now, here's Courtney Street.
Yep.
Our road is proposed to do this and tie into Hayfield, okay? Something like this.
Okay.
So here's Courtney.
Yep.
This is the extension of Courtney and the cul-de-sac. Here's Theodore. Here is Lucille. Here's Corbett.
Yep.
And here is.
Kennedy.
Kennedy.
Yep.
And here is Winifred.
Yep, the only street that's not on this plan is High Crest and Herman.
Right, which is even further south.
No, it's not. It's right here. It's the street that's left off this plan.
By the south from these.
It doesn't matter if it's further south. It's right, it's right there.
My sister lives right there.
Question.
That was where we built our first house that was taken away.
So if I don't connect to Hayfield.
Yep.
And I put a cul-de-sac here, okay? And this length is now exceeds the dead end requirement.
Okay.
So that this is not considered a dead end, how do I connect this to one of these other streets?
Make a variance to accept the dead end requirement?
Show me how to get from here to any one of these.
From here?
Yeah.
What is this? The cul-de-sac of the second phase?
No, if we were not to connect to Hayfield.
Yep.
So here's the property line. If we were to make this a dead end and make a cul-de-sac here, which exceeds the dead end requirement, so that this is not a dead end anymore, I need to do something to get to another street.
Well, that's your job to engineer and figure something out. Build a bridge, put a road in.
And board members.
If you can build the bridge to put 38 new houses, you can build a bridge to get to that street.
With the Wetlands Protection Act, you're limited by the square footage of wetland that you can alter.
Okay.
To 5,000 square feet. This little crossing here and this little crossing here bring us to the 5,000. That's all we have. 50 by 100, that's 5,000 square feet. You cannot cross wetland of this distance or of, as you were just proposing, to bring it all the way through this wetland swamp to connect.
Well, it's not all the way over there. The street.
That's what you just told me to build.
The street I'm proposing people use for entrance is here.
These are all lots owned by individual homeowners. This is the street. It ends here. We can't cross people's land to connect this road to this road.
Where's Lucille Lane?
Theodore comes off like this. And does something like this. Here's Theodore, which I want to show you in a push. And so this comes through, this cul-de-sac, again, cul-de-sac in the middle of the wetland. And Lucille continues off this route, further down here.
Marissa lives on High Crest, right? Theodore is the next street? I'm sure there's always more than one way to solve a problem. That is not the only way. There's a street right here and there's Courtney Street right there. So if you have two entrances, two exits, I don't understand why it has to be a third.
Any questions from the board? John, any questions?
Could I just say, I apologize. I cut John off because I was concerned about, you know, let's name names if we're talking about who said what to who. And I think we got a name, but that's a separate issue, but apologize for.
No, no problem. I was just curious, my question was, between 15, 16?
15 and 12.
We're 15, no.
I drove there.
We're 15, 16 is here, cul-de-sac's here.
What was told to you that that?
Conservation land.
Conservation land. Nobody can build on the side of us. And now there's a lot there.
Was it a lot? Was it a one-time passage?
Conservation land.
Wetlands, they told us.
Not buildable, conservation land.
We were so happy. No neighbors. We picked that lot.
I've been there. I've seen your house.
All of a sudden, we see a lot there. I'm like, what's going on here? You know what I mean? They can't be doing this. This is $450,000. It's no joke.
Any questions, Mario?
No, the only question, not questioning, but just wanted to leave you guys with this. We, here on the planning board, we work on both of them. We respect your house, your children, your safety, anything possible. But we have to be also, you have to understand that we in the board, we have to have legality of the work as well, the explanation they give you. So we are not necessarily, we say, okay, do whatever you want. They can't. All right?
How are they?
And we, I'm saying this is off, not off the record, but I want you to understand that your previous, where you're living today, they went through the same thing. So we respect your privacy, your safety, and we'll work with you.
Thank you.
Don't leave here what I say, the planning board will not work with us. We work with you.
Thank you.
My question is, how have they already begun? How has it already, they've already built the road. They've built a road of access so they could go build the bridge, and they've already built the road and started clearing trees, and some of which are on the easement of our property.
Yes, Mr. Aguirre, if I can respond.
As I stated a little while ago, that activity 100% is being utilized as a construction area in support of finishing up Phase 1. It will also serve as the location and the support for the construction of Phase 2. And as we were going through the subdivisions, we just had to move a super, super large loan pile that was behind Lot 23. Well, that house was set to close. That dirt needs to go somewhere. So again, it was placed on that next property down. It only makes sense to cut the trees once, the trees that you may be cutting to build a road. So yes, that area has been cleared to some extent. Materials have been placed there. Not in construction of Phase 2, because there's no guarantee of where Phase 2 is going to be. So it has been clearly used for the stockpile of material, placement of machines to get it off of Phase 1 to start cleaning up Phase 1. So Phase 1 isn't a construction site for the next four years. They want to get Phase 1 done, cleaned up, complete, and be off of it and let everyone live in their new subdivision and move on to Phase 2.
That's not what it looks like. It looks like they've already started building the road, just so you know.
What is your name?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have one additional letter or email. This is from Matthew DeFaria and Devany Kudrich. Are they here? If they can read it.
Hi, my name is Devany Kudrich, and this is my fiance, Matthew DeFaria. We live on 122 Brookside Street. And it's not our property, but our neighbor's property that abuts what the plans are gonna be for the 38-house development. We have concerns regarding the plans. It's mostly to do with the forest and is that gonna all be knocked down? Because, I mean, we have so many animals that are in there right now. Where are they gonna go? I mean, at some point, conservation has to take place because we're gonna have issues of animals in our front yards, which, I mean, I don't mind, but these people that have come into the city and are in this new subdivision are gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be a shock to them when they find a deer or three or four or five in their front yard eating their flowers or laying in their yard, or coyotes, which we have many of, going into their front yards or walking or strutting down the street when there's children involved. I mean, I don't have kids. I have dogs. And it's terrifying to see them out, and they don't care one bit that you're a human. They will literally just stand there. And imagine if you have a small dog, a small child. I mean, that's very concerning. And it's just, and the birds and everything that's in the forest, where are they gonna go? You know what I mean? It's, at some point, how many houses are we gonna put? We're just gonna, and keep taking wetlands and keep taking forests and then there's nothing. Where are they gonna go? Is they're gonna die or they're gonna be in people's yards? And it's gonna be a nuisance to the city. At one point, does it stop? You know, I just, I don't know. Oh, and the holding ponds are.
Yeah, we noticed one of the holding ponds is gonna be very close to our neighbor's property in the back. And he says there's no water, but I've seen water multiple times.
Yeah, there's standing water almost all the time.
Basically, you're creating a meat breeding ground for mosquitoes.
Yeah.
You know.
And multiple.
Other bugs and everything else, like, I don't know. I'm more for keeping the land than building your houses, to be honest. And it doesn't affect us as traffic. We're on Brookside Street, so it doesn't affect us. I get the other folks' concerns with that. And, you know, as far as your bridge goes, our, Steep Brook flows right through our property. And when it rains, it floods on our property. I have video of it. And where's all your runoff gonna go while you're building that bridge?
Yeah.
It's gonna be a lot bigger than your 36-inch spike right now, fine. But as it's being constructed, is all that runoff coming to my property?
Yeah, I mean, there's downed trees all throughout.
I know. Steep Brook, if you walk it, which I have a little bit, but it's very overgrown from my property towards where it's proposed to build.
Isn't there a pond back there as well?
I'm not sure. Probably have it gone out there. But it floods. So is that gonna be more of a problem after this development is, you know, built? Am I gonna have more flooded water in my property? That I can't use as much of my property as I can now? I mean, those are our concerns.
Ready?
Yes.
All right, so what I can offer to you is that through this process, we have to submit lengthy drainage calculations to the planning board. Their professionals review them to make sure that they're correct. And what those calculations do is they look at all of the ponds, how water flows now, how water will flow later. And we have to, by law, make sure that there is not an increase in stormwater runoff to any abutting property. Those calculations have already been reviewed and approved. Paul Ferland, as I stated in the initial presentation, has asked for an additional calculation with regards to the culvert to see what storm that can handle, and we'll be providing that to him. So understand one thing. This does not get approved tonight. This is probably a three-month process before we get through this board, hopefully. Then there'll be another permitting process through the Conservation Commission that maybe some of your concerns will be dealt with a little bit differently. So with regards to wildlife, this isn't an endangered species habitat. Yes, there is wildlife. Everyone wants to live in the woods, but nobody wants to cut a tree.
Yeah, that was the point of why we bought our house.
Exactly. Well, everyone else wants to do that. And people who own land have the rights and the ability to develop the land the same way that your house was developed.
Where are these animals gonna go?
What we're lucky with, with this proposal, because of the wetland system and everything that you see shaded in yellow, a good portion of this site, probably half of it, is being preserved in open space. So there will be plenty of room. Now granted, I have deer every day in my yard. My wife feeds them, and I scream. Don't feed the deer, because they eat everything. So when you give them things to eat, yes, they will eat. Some people love the deer in their yard. Coyotes, I had to put fences up to make sure coyotes didn't eat my little dogs. So those are the things that you find when you move into an area that's wooded and has wildlife. There are coyotes in the middle of the city. You see pictures of it all of the time. That's just.
Yeah, because it was developed. Their land was developed. They have nowhere to go.
So when the planning board or the zoning board of the city of Fall River pass a regulation that no more homes are to be constructed, then homeowners won't have the ability to do this. That won't happen. But there are protections in place, environmental reviews, conservation commissions, different regulations that we have to go through. So we're not coming in and clear-cutting this entire site.
But how many acres are you cutting down of trees?
Let's see, we've got, what did I say, 46 houses with 12,000 square feet. So every four lots is an acre. Maybe 12 acres?
Out of how many?
Out of 30, sorry, out of 48.
So almost half.
Those are our concerns. I guess that's it. You good?
Yeah.
Can I just say, I thank you for speaking on behalf of the animals. I think it's a really important thing. And I.
Clearly, it doesn't matter, but yeah.
Well, here's the thing. We have to play with the hand we're dealt. And we're dealt the laws and the regulations and the Wetlands Acts. And there are many things about those provisions that I personally like to see a lot stronger.
Yeah.
But we have to deal with what we have in front of us. But we have to deal with what we have in front of us, and in many respects, not strong enough. And I, I, I see, I understand your, your problem.
What happens when this becomes a nuisance for all the homeowners that are now going to be affected? That aren't expecting this. Like, we expect it. We're, we're on woods. We've been there for almost nine years. We understand that. But these people that are coming in don't expect that. You know what I mean? They're going to be, like I said-
For the first two years, they're going to love the deer in their yard. They're going to think it's fantastic.
Until I call your promise and everything else that goes with it.
Got to watch out for Lyme disease.
Exactly. And the triple E in the not, West Nile, that's going to be in your holding ponds.
But people don't have to buy these houses. They don't have to.
But they fly.
Exactly, because people want to live in the woods.
So, it doesn't matter where you are.
Those things, those things of deer in your yard, mosquitoes, all the things that come with living in a rural environment, that's what people are buying, and that's what they want.
But that pond would never be there if it wasn't for these houses.
Correct.
There wouldn't be standing water if it wasn't for these ponds.
It's adjacent to a wetland that's already standing water.
No, it's not, because, I mean, the brook is flowing all the time.
Well, the brook, I'm not talking about the brook. Talking about the bordering vegetated wetland, which is what you see shaded in yellow.
We live there. We have very little with mosquitoes, yeah. It's never been a problem.
I do have a question. He said there's going to be a meeting about conservation.
Yes, yes.
Will we get a notice for that?
Yeah, anyone within, well, conservation, if you're two miles away-
If there are butters, right?
Yeah, we have wetlands all behind us.
Right, well, what happens is, as, this board has a greater radius of notification to a butter, I think it's 300 feet. The Conservation Commission is usually anyone within 100 feet. So, if you're within 100 feet of this piece, then yes, you will get notified.
If we're not in 100 feet, is aware-
You can also call the-
Absolutely, you can call.
Conservation Commission or the planning board, they'll tell you when the next meeting is, where it's going to be, and just sort of keep an eye on that, because this issue may or may not be at the next meeting
Yeah.
of the Conservation Commission. Probably won't be, the way things have developed.
No, I mean, it'll probably be-
In the fall sometime, perhaps.
Probably September's meeting. And they only meet, what, once a month?
Yeah, so you can call the office. They'll give you the monthly schedule, and then just sort of, as that day approaches each time, just to be sure, give a call and say, is, is this on the agenda for that meeting? Then you'll know.
And hopefully, they're not doing Zoom meetings by then.
Huh?
Hopefully, they're not doing Zoom meetings by then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Is two more people on base to talk on the subject?
Yes.
Are you all aware?
What?
I know what I left. I live around the answers. Didn't you make a lunch? Oh, you do the same thing I do.
Madam Chair, they said they're all set. They just wanted to be here, but then they didn't want to speak.
Okay.
Madam Chair, in closing, I have signed an extension to be placed on whatever the next meeting is, so of course, we're not asking the board to act on this. We do have quite a few things to resolve.
Yes.
August 10th would be the next meeting.
When would it be?
August 10th.
August 10th? So, hopefully, we'll get a clean bill of health from the rest of the world before we come back to you.
Okay.
We won't waste your time coming back unless all these items are taken place and, and done. So, we hope, the next time you'll see us, everyone will be happy, except for you. Hopefully, you'll be happy by the end of that, so.
Very good.
We won't come just to spin wheels. So, we'll take the next month, try to address everybody's comments, concerns, the different agencies. We're going to work with Bill and the Community Utilities. Courtney is going to require some, some improvement, some drastic improvement. Just like, I mean, on Driftwood, we did the same, where we basically reconstructed that, brought in new sewer, new water, and resurfaced the whole road. I think there'll be a little bit more done on Courtney, some sidewalks and things like that, so. Let us, let us get working on that, and we'll hope to see you soon. Hopefully, at a better times.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
For the presentation. Good job.
Just for point of information, do I understand correct, we postponed until August 10th? Okay.
Yes.
Are you here? You can't travel? You're stuck?
Do we need a vote on that?
I can go to Italy. They won't let me in.
There you go. They might not let you out.
I suppose we should maybe take a vote, just to, to agree to, to table it until August 10th.
We're going to take a vote to table this issue until we are-
Yeah, I make motion to table to next meeting, which will be August 10th.
August 10th meeting.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have three Form A's to look at.
Yes.
And the first one is submitted with respect to 160 County Street. And the petitioner's has the benefit of a variance which was issued on September 19th of this past year. This was to allow dividing this parcel into three lots. The anticipation is that a new single-family dwelling would be constructed on each of the lots. And as you'll see on the plan, lots 1, 2, and 3 each have frontage on County Street, which is sufficient under the zone that they're located in. And, um, I'm sorry, frontage, did I say County Street? It should be frontage on Rocliffe Street. And that is a public way, so it qualifies, each of the three lots would qualify for the endorsement with approval not required. And I recommend that you adopt that vote.
Okay, do I have motion?
I have mo, uh, if, I make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed. Item number B.
Okay, B may look a little familiar to you. We approved a plan for the same frontage at the last meeting. Since that time, they've decided to make a slight modification to the plan. This is on South Beacon Street. It is fronting on a public way. The, uh, South Beacon is, it actually ends a little bit off to the left of the plan, so to speak, a little bit south of what we're looking at. But this is public at this point. The concept here, you'll see that long strip on the north side of the, of the proposed parcel, that's going to be conveyed to on a butter with a requirement that it be maintained as a barrier for the anticipated residential development that's going to be proposed for Lot Z, which is the, the big lot in the middle. And that's perfectly agreeable, because it's going to be a non-buildable lot, so it can be carved out of the larger piece. What's left, Lot Z, is going to be, we're going to see eventually a proposal for some townhouse units to be constructed. But for our purposes tonight, the question is, is it on a public way, and is the frontage adequate? And the answer to those questions is yes, so it qualifies, and I recommend that you endorse it, approval not required.
Make a motion that we approve the A and R.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's see. Last and not least is, we're back in the Highland Farms, Highland Woods part of the world. And fortunately, I don't think this one will draw as much controversy. But this is a request to basically change the configuration of a lot. You'll see on the proposed plan a little designation for parcel 23A, and, and a smaller piece designated as 23B. What's happening is here, this is one of the parcels at the end of Hayfield. Not at the end that we were just talking about, but at the, the other end, the Driftwood Street end of Hayfield Lane. And they're changing the existing Lot 23 into three pieces, 23A and 23B. Both of these parcels, as reconfigured, would have the required frontage on Hayfield, which is a public way. So, they're entitled to the endorsement, and I recommend you vote to endorse it, approval not required.
Do I have a motion?
I make the motion to endorse.
Before you take the vote, let me just rephrase that. What, what I really meant to say was, the, the main reason that they are entitled to this is under a different part of the subdivision control law, which is that they are lots on a street which was previously part of an approved Form A plan. That's what I meant to say. The result's the same. Sorry to interrupt.
Do I have a second? A motion's been made.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed. Okay, and we have item number two. Approval of Open Space and Recreation Plans 2017 to 2024.
Madam Chair, if I could tell you what that's all about, please, when, I, before I went on sabbatical from my position as planner, we discovered that the Open Space Recreation Plan for the city was just about ready to expire. And we knew that having a current approved plan was necessary, because if you don't have an approved plan, there are certain grant possibilities that you may not be eligible for. So, we retained SERPAD, Southeastern Regional Planning, to, to assist us with the development of a revised Open Space and Recreation Plan. That process started shortly before my disappearance. And when I came back, lo and behold, it was still going on, but almost at the finish line. SERPAD orchestrated on behalf of the city a number of public hearings. I was able to participate in some of those. They were very extensive and very well-attended. And the plan was ultimately put together, and all that remains at this point is for two letters to be issued. One of them to be issued by the mayor endorsing the plan that's been prepared, and one of them from the planning board endorsing this plan. The mayor has signed his letter. I have it in the file. He's reviewed this. He's happy with it. I've reviewed it. I'm, I'm happy with it. I think it's, it's just what we needed. You'll see on the agenda, it refers to, this is the Open Space Plan for 2017 to 2024. The reason, it's not a typo. The, the reason it's 2017 is that that's to pick up where the other one expired, which was towards the end of 2016. So, this plan's in effect until 2024 theoretically. That's not to say it could never be amended. If there's some reason to look at it and entertain the possibility of an amendment, that can be done. It ultimately has to be approved at the state level, and the state has approved this plan, the one that was distributed to you, has approved it on a contingent basis, so to speak. The only contingency being, those two letters have to be filed. So, once they're filed, it'll be 100% approved, and we'll be eligible for grants that perhaps we might not be able to apply for without the approved plan. So, I, I would ask that you vote to endorse and approve the, the plan as presented, and to authorize the chair to sign a letter of endorsement that we can then submit to the state.
And do I have a motion?
I make motion to approve the Open Space Recreation Plan 2017 to 2024.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I've got a letter here someplace for the chair to sign. We'll do that in a minute. The last item. No, second to last. Anyway. Item number three. This is, I'm suggesting that you take a vote to authorize the chair to sign documents that the board, that the board has voted to authorize the chair to sign. The reason for this is, there's some ambiguity at the Registry of Deeds. I, I know that during the earlier parts of the COVID crisis, some documents needing signature came around. And the thought was, gee, wouldn't it be nice if we only needed one signature instead of tracking everybody down? And I called the Registry of Deeds, because I remember from my practice of law that they had a system of maintaining in their files recorded votes of various bodies, commissions, boards, that would be kept at the registry, and, and if you wanted to record a document, and you wanted proof that the person who signed it had auth, had authority to do so, you could just look at the registry records and say, ah, here's a vote that was taken by the planning board that says the chair can sign anything that the rest of them have approved, and you don't have to get the whole board to sign it, or the zoning board had filed a vote, or whoever had filed a vote. And, and I, I was quite sure in my mind that that was the procedure that had always been followed. But when I called the registry a few months ago, they said, well, we don't do that anymore. And I don't believe that to be true, but to resolve any ambiguity, I looked at the statute. And the statute's very clear that if the board takes a vote and sends a letter to the registry that recites the fact that the vote took place, and recites the fact that the chair is now authorized to sign documents on behalf of the board for any decisions that the board as a whole makes, that that's adequate, and that the registry should keep that record. So, anybody searching the title later on, who sees, say, a Form A plan that's signed just by the chair, doesn't have to say, gee, where are the other signatures? They can hopefully find the record at the registry, which says that the board has authorized the chair alone to sign things. So, this doesn't mean that the chair can just go and do what he or she wants to do without consulting the rest of you. This only has to do with items where the whole board, by majority vote, has approved an item to be signed. And once you've done that, then the chair alone has, has authority to sign on behalf of the whole board. So, I think it's helpful from the point of view of, you know, just ministerially getting things done procedurally. And if you agree, I'd like you to, to vote to authorize the chair to, to, to sign alone on your behalf, things that you may direct her to sign. And we have a vote that you should all sign, and this is hopefully the last time that you all have to sign something. And we'll file it with both the Registry of Deeds and with the local district of the land court. So, that's why there are two of them, one for each side of the registry records. And hopefully, the next time somebody calls the registry and asks, gee, did the planning board ever record a vote with you? The answer will be, oh, yeah, it's right here. That's my proposal. So.
What's the pleasure of the board on this?
As you said, they both can be recorded in the registered side, filed in registered side, recorded in recorded land. I think that makes lots of sense. I, I agree.
I don't see any problem with it. The chair smile, make a motion to approve the chair to endorse on behalf of the board, and, on behalf of the board. So, you solo be signing. Don't forget our name.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have approval of the minutes of the June 15th, 2020 meeting. Do I have a vote? Motion?
I make a motion to approve the plans of the, the minutes of the June 15th meeting.
Okay.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and and, um, now we just, I just have one item here that I think I'd like to have this correspondence entered into the record. It's from attorney Gary Howiak. And it was my question of last month as to whether an unsigned correspondence should be brought before the board. In his correspondence, in short, he says, yes, you may consider- In his correspondence, in short, he says, yes, you may consider the emails signed, if it's a typed name, as significantly and sufficiently signed. If the sender fails to disclose his or her name, it is proper to reject the comments and refuse to read them into the public record. The sender, if the sender requests anonymity, or the requests be kept confidential, you ask whether you must honor such request. And the answer is no, it's a public record and part of the record subject to disclosure. So yes, you may, in such case, disclose public record to the proponent of this matter. Now, the reason I'd like that entered into the record is because last month, there was a question as to the office being asked not to provide the name of the sender. And so there was a question as to whether this item should be brought before the board. And this clearly answers that question. The answer is, it does, that correspondence does not have to be brought before the board unless it is adequately signed, either by email typed or written signature. And I'd like the board to adopt that. Do I have any questions?
Your attorney, any question?
Nope.
Actually, my only concern is this, I agreed that we should not accept anonymous comments. However, nowadays, to get email addresses, you know, we have to get so creative, numbers and all this and all that. I would hate for someone to send an email that says GLPA218253@gmail.com, and then signs it Gloria Pachico. So I think we still have to use some discretion when receiving emails. I would like to open it for discussion, do you see what my point is? Like, obviously, my email address goes out as, you know, GloriaPachicoPachicoLaw.com, so you obviously know it's from me. And people can create fake emails. So I understand your question, and I think attorney Hawiak's response was a good one and a fair one. I just want us to keep in mind that the email address depends on what looks. Like, I've seen some very strange email addresses, and I'm emailing my clients, and I would never guess it was John Smith, by the way, and it's like Mustang 526, you know, but that's John Smith.
No, that's mine.
Yeah, okay, so, interesting, I think it's an interesting, I think it's a good question that you brought up.
Well, in the particular case of this, they did sign it, and then they asked the office to block it.
So they did have a signature, not just a typed name?
It was an email.
Well, we're all here, open to a retribution, so. And you can't make allegations if you're not going to stand behind it.
Right, and that, of course, is my point. Anybody can send in correspondence and not sign them, and we would bring them before discussion. And I just feel, if it's not signed, that we should not bring it before the board.
And I'm just saying, even if, although Gary Hawiak said if it's their typed name, because sometimes you're in a rush, you don't, you can't scan in the signature, et cetera, I understand, I think we may just have to keep in mind, if it's, you know, Mustang 526, and it says it's John Smith, but there's no signature, and I'm assuming all these emails have their addresses, right?
Do you like the street address?
The emails should list their name and their address.
I believe it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Today, for an example, today, I received three emails, and I did not, did not recognize. And when this guy called me from South Dakota, and actually, he's referring through my email, and this sign, nothing, so I put him on hold, I clicked my phone, and I told him to stand by. Within minutes after that, I says, keep talking, and you're being recorded from the police department. So in other words, anything in email, and now I play, you know, Terry, thank God for Terry, she does call my email, anything, if I don't recognize, don't respond it, and I told Terry, if you don't recognize, just don't even print it. So I can understand the privacy today is.
I suppose one thing we could do, I mean, there's so much fraud going on, I understand what Gloria's concerned about, and maybe we could just have an office procedure that if we get something that raises any kind of suspicion, maybe we could take the next step and email these folks back and say, you know, we'll be happy to read your comments in, but let's have your street address and your phone number first, and then they'll email it to us, or they won't. And if they do, then we can call them and say, is it really you? You know, maybe.
And we can check with the records, unless they're a tenant, but if they're a homeowner, they'll, they'll be on record that they're the homeowner.
And you're never going to be ironclad, sure, I mean, they can be fraudulent about their address and their phone number, too, perhaps, but.
But we can check somewhat, if John Smith doesn't live at 123 South Main Street, then you know we're going to disregard it.
Yeah, I mean, I can see taking at least one more step to see if, you think that makes sense, to at least go back to these people and say, okay, let us have your address and your phone number, you know, just for security purposes, then we can check and call that number, and if it's, you know, if it's a fraudulent person, they maybe they'll get afraid and they won't pursue it.
And don't forget, this mostly came about because it was going to be a Zoom meeting where they weren't allowed here. Normally, at most meetings, people will come to the meeting and speak to themselves, but this all happened because of Zoom meeting, and they have to send us comments and all that.
So what does the board wish to do?
I recommend that they go, tell you get a better information.
Well, we have the attorney saying, we have attorney Hawiak.
I'm sorry?
We have attorney Hawiak, right here, Gary Hawiak, saying, if the sender requests anonymity, or the requests be kept confidential, you ask whether, you must honor it, and the answer's no. It's a public record and part of the record subject to disclosure.
The answer's no.
So the answer is, and my, my point on this one was that the person did sign it, and then requested that our office staff not provide it to us. They had it, but not provided, and therefore, we are, I have it right here, we are given correspondence. I think the correspondent had a lot of merit, I'm not disputing that the correspondent didn't have merit. What I'm saying is, I don't believe that we should be reading correspondence just because someone doesn't want their name on record.
And really, frankly, once they poke that transmit button, it's public record, the discussion's over, we got if somebody wants to see what's in the public record. A lot of these emails, you'll see, will say that down at the bottom, I think from the state level, and you get an email, a lot of the departments say, you know, the fine print at the bottom, you know, this is public record, this is, you know, and you can't fail to disclose it if anybody asks.
Okay, then Bill, why did the office delete it?
Why did we delete it?
Because.
Well, we asked her.
Because she was asked to delete it, and I'm saying, in the future, I believe that we should not honor that request.
I think you're right.
Say what?
She's saying it's my fault. I can take it.
I think you bring a very good point, I'm glad you asked to leave counsel's opinion.
Actually, I asked Bill for his opinion, and he referred it to attorney Hawiak, and
So ultimately, you came out doing the right thing, right?
Yes, absolutely, but I think this, it helps the office know where the board stands should this request be made of them again, and it probably will be made of them again, so now we have something from the attorney telling us the guideline that we should go by.
And it helps the public who want, who may want to make their request again, not bother with a three-page letter if it's not going to be read. So it helps all of us to clarify it.
So do you need a vote to direct the office to adopt that procedure, I guess is what you're saying?
I would, I would like that, yes. Do I have a vote? A motion?
I make the motion that we accept attorney Gary Hawiak's legal opinion regarding correspondence to the board, and regarding anonymity and signatures, just as the chairwoman read into the record, I make motion we adopt it.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Congratulations.
And I think now we just need a motion to adjourn if we have no more public input, so we'd like to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?